...economic development plan proposals, and I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. The council last month voted on and approved the, for Pat Bridges, our city administrator, to proceed with sending out a request for proposal to firms to submit to us, the city, an economic development plan proposal, to do that for the city. And so, tonight, we are going to, we're going to hear their proposals, the three companies, and we're going to, we're going to pick one. And what that, what that effort will do is, over the next four to six months, work within the community to put together a community-wide strategy for our economy. And I want to personally thank the, everybody for attending tonight, but specifically, you can see we've got the tables in front of us, which is not normal for these chambers, but for tonight, it's, it's very significant in that we, we recognize in the city council that we've got some key partners in this. I mean, not only the citizens of the community, but we've got the Chamber, Steadco, Tarleton, Ranger, and Eryth County that are specifically invited tonight because we recognize and have been working for several months now in partnership with these groups, recognizing that any economic development strategy that we develop as a community requires those partnerships to be successful. And so, I, I wanted to, one, thank you for being here tonight, and we, we look forward to, you know, getting your feedback and reaction when we get to the end of this, just to hear kind of what you, what you think. I, I think we've got three excellent firms we're going to hear from tonight, a great track record of performance within the state of Texas, and it's going to be enlightening for all of us, I think, to see some of the tools that they bring to, to this. I just wanted to say a couple of things real quick about what is an economic development plan, because that's something that obviously this community has never had. And so, for us to talk about something we've never seen is sort of like describing an elephant, you know, try to do that to somebody that's never seen one before. So, what is it? Well, the simple way to think about it, I think, is, is that it is a, it is a document and an effort that allows us to bring focus to the use of resources in our community. It allows us to all get on the same page with policies and projects, and it will create an overall positive effect on Stevensville's economy. There's no doubt in my mind of that, because it has everywhere that it has been done. And it'll ultimately have a positive effect on the city's revenues and ability to support, as far as the city government's concerned, the requirements of meeting the needs of the city. It will help make city government more effective, okay? It will also provide a more efficient use of taxpayers' dollars. Those are key, two key points, I think. It will build a vision, it will help build consensus, and most importantly, it will develop and mature partnerships across our community. This, this is about us working together as a team. As y'all have heard me say before, our opponents are not in this room right now. They're up 281 in Mineral Wells, or over in Weatherford, or down 377 Brownwood Way. And they already have a strategic plan, all, all three of those communities that I've talked about, and are reaping benefits of that. I think another significant thing for us to recognize in this is that it's, is to ensure that our economic growth in this community is prepared to support the opportunities and lifestyle improvements for, for the residents that, that are important, that, that will allow us to develop good-paying jobs, and will provide the infrastructure to support those that are already here. It is really important for us as a community to understand the economic dynamics of Tarleton, considering Division One, and how do we, as an economy, support that effort? That, that's critical when you think about this. It's also important to understand how do we retain manufacturing that we have in this community so that they don't have a corporate office somewhere in Houston decide to move somewhere else? And how do we ensure that, that we're able to do that? And likewise, the, the health industry that's so important to us, to ensure that their corporate offices in Arlington, or wherever they may be, are, are making decisions in concert with what our efforts are. And so, a large focus of this, and I think we'll hear this tonight, is on existing businesses to ensure that there's retention and expansion, but it's all in, in mind of trying to, to do so to improve the lives of citizens of Stevensville. And we can't do that without local stakeholders, be it local businesses and industry, and the decision-makers here in the council and, and the other boards and, and institutions that are represented here will, I think, positively contribute to the city's future economic health. And that's really what this is about, to preserve who we are for the future. And stakeholder involvement is really important. I think you're going to hear tonight from all three of these firms that there's going to be an extensive amount of interviews with individuals, one-on-one interviews, as well as focus groups, to try to glean from the community, what's important to you, and how does that fit into preserving and, and growing the economy, okay? The final thing I want to mention to the, the people sitting at the table is that though we're not going to specifically ask you to, to get out your checkbook, anybody that wants to contribute to this effort is more than, feel more than able to. This, this council is, is prepared to, to fund this initiative, we've already made that decision. But, but I, what I want, want you to know is that we're not going to turn away if you decide to, to write a check to support this effort, because I think what you're going to hear tonight is that you're going to benefit from this. And, you know, kind of my thinking with that is, well, if there's benefit gained, maybe there ought to be participation in that. And so, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask for us as a city council to say, hey, if you're interested, you know, Pat Bridges will be more than happy to, to take your, your check up[423.00][423.00][laughter] later in the evening. And I say, all joking aside, I, I think it is something that, you know, we don't need that to be able to award the contract, I, I want to be sure you understand that, but I think it's something I'd certainly like, I think the council would like for you to consider as an organization, to maybe contribute to this as you see what you're going to hear tonight. And, you know, with that, I'll let, let Pat talk through what the, kind of the sequence for tonight will be, and then we'll, we'll just start with contestant number one, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor. We originally had four firms scheduled to present tonight, and earlier this week, one of those firms decided to withdraw. Didn't go into specifics, just said that they had decided they were not going to participate in this process. So, we're still left with three very good proposals. I've, I've been asked, which one do I like? And my response is, I like all of them. I'm not going to make their job easy for them. They're, they're going to have some difficult decisions to make, but what we'll do, the, the first company that'll be here, that'll present, will be Chabin Concepts. Each firm will have about 20 minutes or so to do a presentation, and then we'll give about, allow for about 10 minutes for the council and our guests to, to ask questions that they may have. After that time, that particular firm, they will, they will leave. We'll take about a five-minute break in between the presentations, and we'll get the next group ready to go. Once all three firms have done their presentations and they've left, then the mayor and the council will, will pick up discussion with, with themselves and the audience, and hopefully we will have a, a firm selected by the time we close out of here tonight. So, with that being said, Chief, would you bring the first one in? Our first presenter is going to be Ms. Audrey Taylor. She's president and CEO of Chabin Concepts.
So, in a way, this is open government at its best, because normally, this is something that would take place in a boardroom or in a, in a, in a closed room to get these presentations, but with the open meetings requirement, what you're witnessing is basically a business meeting of the council. And so, we, we do value and want to get your input and thoughts and reactions to this as we go through it, but ultimately, the, the council's going to, going to ponder and make a decision based on what we hear tonight among the three.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'll try to stand this way so I can see everybody on council. Thank you for having me here, this is just wonderful. I'm Audrey Taylor from Chabin Concepts, economic development consultant, doing business for 25 years, and doing economic development for about 35 years. Before I start, I would just like to share particularly with the council and the community, I'm from a Marine family, and also a cowboy family, wearing hunting horses, but I want to offer our condolences for the loss of your hero. And I just think you guys should invite Clint Eastwood and Bradley Cooper here and give them the cowboy Oscar for the best movie and the, and the best actor.[673.12][673.12][laughter] We are very disappointed that they didn't just... So, now on to economic development. So, why economic development? And probably more for all of you, is why an economic development strategy? Why do you need to do one? Typically, for our corporations, when we get called in, we're called, we're called in because you're at a tipping point for some reason. Either you're experiencing growth, you see some opportunity, you have some challenges, sometimes it's a crisis that you're going through, and sometimes you're just looking at, okay, what's our future going to be? You know, where do we want to be in the future? How do we continue to have economic growth in our community, but still maintain our community? But the character that we're wanting to have, that has always been there, because you have deep roots and heritage and stuff. And so, it's about, you just want to unify. You've been doing economic development, but it just hasn't really chilled. Everybody's doing something, but you haven't had that unified vision, and you want to come together on that. So, one of the things I wanted to share with you is that as you embark on economic development, it's not a destination, it's a journey. And you guys are all football players, there's a lot of blocking and tackling in economic development about where you're going to be. And it's a, and it's a long-term vision and effort to get there. Thank you. Just want to tell you a little bit about our team. Chabin Concepts would be the lead for the project if you choose us, and we're a small firm, and we specialize in small and medium-sized communities. And that company is located in an area similar to this, a little bit larger, but we are in an ag university town. So, we understand a lot of the things that you're going through, because university towns have special characteristics, particularly when they're matched with an, an ag area through it. Also on our team is a site selector, Don Sheldon, and we bring a site selector to the team because we want to have their perspective of looking and evaluating the community from the business standpoint. So, Don works with large manufacturers typically, that are looking to locate. He does this internationally, and done about 6,000 projects in the U.S. And so, when he comes in to look at the community, he's looking at it from that perspective. So, he's not judging your community, he's looking at it from the standpoint of how would a business evaluate your community about doing business there? The third team, person on our team would be KSS Engineering from here in Texas, and they would help us if we identified specific sites, of looking at those and evaluating those sites for their infrastructure improvements, and how they might prove best for economic development, and just giving us that experience from that. Our project approach is what we call a three-step approach, and we analyze, which was step one, which we call, where are we now currently? And step two, the engagement process, is where do we want to be? And step three is, how will we get there? And that's our, our action plan. What we try to do is to bring fresh eyes to your community, because we believe that any economic development strategy is not a boy's league. And we, like you, don't want it to sit on the shelf. So, we want to make sure that you're going to be implementing this. So, we use this process. And when we're looking at the community, we look at it around trade, what we call economic drivers, and there are main, three main economic drivers. Those are your traded sector, typically manufacturing, or any of the businesses that are selling goods and services outside in the community and bringing money in, the highest multiplier effect. Second is usually the visitor. Now, that visitor could be coming here to visit, or it could be a visitor who's coming here to do business. So, like the university is probably bringing vendors from outside to do business. They're also considered a visitor. They come in, they do some business here, they can leave some dollars, and then they leave. The third one is the economic driver is all of you who live here. You're buying goods and services here, and you drive that local economy here by what... So, we look at all three of those. But in your community, we look at two others, one being the university, because it's an economic driver, and also the other one is the healthcare. What is that? It's probably providing services broader than, than your community. So, in our first phase, where are we now? We typically look at eight factors that you can see, see up here, and we drill down in those factors. We come into the community, and we first do our background research, we do a lot of perception interviews with people from the community and outside of the community, to find out what are the perceptions, because sometimes perceptions are reality, and you need to change those. Then we spend a week, and we evaluate everything that we're finding. In phase two, which is our, where do we want to be, is all about you. This is where the stakeholders really come together, because in doing an economic development strategy, it is you who have to decide and come to consensus on the plan forward. So, what we do is work with you on our findings, and we validate those findings with you to make sure that we didn't miss anything. You would hear from us when we evaluate you, you're going to say, I already knew that. Of course you did. So, it's whether we found it or not, because that's what's, what's important to the business. And if we haven't found it, and you need to tell us about it, we need to know that so we can put that in your strategy to address that. So, we're going to validate all of your strengths and your weaknesses. We, at this point, we want to look at your goals. What are the specific goals that all of you want from an economic development strategy? You know, that's really important. Once you have the goals, it's how are we going to prioritize those, because you can't do everything at one time. So, we'll prioritize them. And then, the last thing we like that is the capacity. Can you get this done? So, what is really the capacity? Because we don't want to set up unrealistic expectations of what you can get done to do that. From that, we create four to five initiatives that everybody can agree upon, that we want to move forward. So, that takes us to phase three, and this is what we think is the most critical portion of the strategy, and also where we think we differentiate, which is how will we get there? And this is really the piece, probably prior to this, we've had random, what I call random acts of economic development going on. Things are happening in different places under different organizations. The Chamber might be doing something, Steadco might be doing something, the university is. How do we bring those all together to move forward in a unified map fashion, but yet be independent in doing your work? What we will do is actually take a look at who does what, how will you do it, when will you do it, and what are the expected outcomes of those? So that we can measure what those outcomes are. That's our implementation plan. And just some project experience, we've been doing business for 35 years, all family in small and medium-sized communities across the nation. Probably 40% of our work is in the West Coast portion, and all the rest is across the nation, including the last one, which has always been fun. We've done some work here in Texas, in Sugar Land, in Frisco, in Brownsville, in the Rio Grande area. We have a very close working relationship with USDA, and very close, with the USDA director in California, and sit on their team, what they're doing. And we also have a lot of experience working with the universities, very close working relationship. So, we feel that we could, you know, work easily with all of your partners here. I just want to thank, thank you for having us here, and we would love to be part of your ED team. I have to say that just in doing our first research, and like I said, we like to bring fresh eyes to the areas, that you have great bones, you have some great assets with universities, with your anchor manufacturers, and I think the other great assets you have is you have staff that has economic development experience, which is not usual, and they're very passionate about community and wanting to do things. So, I think that adds some ability for you to get things done maybe faster than the other ones, and to help bring all of you together. So, I'd like to open it up for questions. I hope I didn't talk too fast. That happened.
Okay. So, just we'll start with the council and see if there's any, any questions?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Jerry.
You, you talked about in phase two, helping us decide a plan of where we're going. How does a city like Stevensville, which has a very diverse background, how do you define out what we want to be? You know, we've heard from some other locations that have done EDCs, particularly type four, or four B, I should say, and they said they had to identify what they wanted to become. You're going to be what? So, how do you help us decide that? Because you're right, all the people sitting here are drivers, and there's a lot of folks out there, like the dairy industry, et cetera, that is not represented here today. So, how do we, how do you help us decide what that's going to be?
Well, what we find with communities, particularly small communities, is that you're going to be more than one thing. You know, when we're looking at economic growth, again, we look, try to look at those three drivers, and in your case, it would be five drivers. Because you'll want all of those to grow so that you can have a diversified economy. I think one thing that you'll all agree upon is that you need to have a diversified economy, and that's going to make you healthy in the future. So, you need to look at all of those sectors. So, we like to help you think through the process, and each one of those drivers of what is, what it is we want. So, we're not saying we're going to be one thing, we're going to be multitudes of things. As we go through and do our research, there are natural things, because of your assets, that will fall out, that will also become very important, is something that you want to market, and that it helps you to become visionary. And we help you through that process, seeing, so it's almost like a funnel. We're taking all of this information and putting it into a funnel, and it starts to shake out about what that vision is. And you're going to have a vision probably for your downtown, which has tremendous bones, you know? You probably have a vision for a university, and how do you align the university with the companies that you have? How do you take some of their assets and really market those assets as unique to the city? You know, because they are very unique, probably very unique in, in all of Texas, all of the nation. And so, those become drivers of things that, that are unique to you, that can align with other businesses.
My, my only other question is, and maybe some others after, I think, hear what everyone else says. You mentioned, you introduced Don...
Sheldon.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
You mentioned that he's the one that goes out and seeks businesses, he's worked with all these projects and stuff. Give me some examples of businesses that he's brought to cities, Stevensville, like Stevensville.
Okay, so, first off, he doesn't work for the city, he works for the client. So, maybe one of his latest ones was Sierra Nevada Brewery. You know, if everybody knows Sierra Nevada, yeah. He doesn't know this.
So, what, was it a city our side? I'm looking for like, in, in compared to our side of cities, what would, some of the kinds of things that we might be thinking of, that, hey, we could get us a brewery?
You, you probably...
Sorry, I just, you know, I just, I just quoting the, quoting her.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I certainly think you could have a craft brewery here, and you could have a craft brewery. Probably something that aligns very well here would be yogurt manufacturing. So, so what you want to do is align, again, these assets that you have already, you have natural assets, that, that you can align to the types of companies that you want to attract here. And what Don does is evaluate, okay, your location factors. Does this make sense for this type of a company to be here? So that when you're going out, and you want to talk to those companies and bring them here, you will have your value proposition put together of why they should be here. Because on a first brush, if you go out to manufacturers right now and said, you know, why don't you locate down here? Well, the first thing that I looked at was, you're not really close to an interstate, so it's transportation could be more expensive for you. So, there's some initial things when you look here for locating the company, you know, does it make sense? On the reverse side of that, you have some very good anchor manufacturers here that are very large. So, they're here for a reason, and transportation wasn't an issue for them. So, what we try to do is make you competitive in that area for certain types of industries that align with what you have here in the community, which will be typically real estate, workers, transportation's not going to be an issue, electricity's not going to be an issue, infrastructure won't be an issue. And then, what do they align with that's already here, or that aligns likely with the university?
Okay, Ms. Taylor. There's no doubt in my mind, when it's all said and done, we'll have a beautiful, several-hundred-page document.
I hope it's not that long.
Okay.[1544.76][1544.76][laughter] I already, already like the way that sounds.
Yeah.
It's a smaller document. We're going to have a beautiful document, though. And help me visualize, though, how are we going to take that document, all these people in this room, apply it to our community, and year after year, continue to, and see that it's implied and built upon every year?
In our phase three, the action plan, and we call it an implementation plan, we take, we first write, and in your main piece of document, it's going to be your initiatives. It's everything that you guys all agree on that needs to happen. And that can be anywhere from the K to 16 school thing that you need to look on. And then, for each of those initiatives, we put together what we call an action plan that is step-by-step, that we've worked out with you, is these are the steps that you need to do to accomplish this goal. Here's the timeline that you can do it, if you have the capacity to do it. Who should lead that, and who should be partners? And then, we ask you that every year, you take a look at that, and why haven't you accomplished that? And there could be good reasons why you haven't accomplished certain things. So, I mean, it's got to be a realistic implementation plan. And we don't say work on all five of your initiatives at one time, probably take one or two that are your priorities, you know? And given your budget, everything comes back around to the budget, and, and the resources and staffing, selecting those that make sense, that might have the low-hanging fruit to move those forward. And part of that is, you're going to have to drive it. What I have confidence in here, though, is the staff that you have that has done economic development, that they would probably make sure that it happened.
So, therefore, every year, there would be the need for all six organizations in this room to come back together, hold each other accountable, and say, Tarleton, you were assigned to do A, B, C, have you done it? Yes, no? How can we help you assist in in doing that, and what can we accomplish for next year?
Phase one? Yes. I, one of the things here, in phase one, is where we are now, you see over here is the ED organization. Hey, that ED organization's not necessarily one organization, that's the team that you have. And that team needs to be committed to their role, whatever their role is. And if they can't get it done for one reason, another, they don't have the resources, if something didn't come through, so you recognize that and, and change that timeline, or, or move that. Always during any economic development strategy, something will happen between now and you get something done, something will come up, there'll be an opportunity that comes up, there'll be a challenge that comes up, there's a crisis that comes up, that moves that timeframe. And you have to recognize that. But we recommend that every year, you get back, come back together, look at your priorities, and say, have we moved this forward?
And last question is, once this document is completed, what support services do you guys provide after that?
We're, we're glad to provide any, I mean, and help you more. But I think one thing that we also do that, that helps you here, and what we have found, particularly with small communities, where you have a lot of volunteers that are doing part of the work for you, is we also provide, along with the implementation plan, what we call a 30, 60, 90-day launch plan. And we find any community that doesn't do the 30, 60, 90 days, you never get to the plan. So, if you don't do those 30, you already know you're, you're in trouble. You know, and they're, they're not big things, they're typically small things. You know, probably in the first 30 days, it's more about organization, maybe it's writing a memorandum of understanding of how we're all agreeing to that we're going to do this, you know, we've been challenged to move forward, and we're going to participate in it, and this is going to be our role. And that, that always seems to help, because you look at it, and you say, you know what, the consultant was a little unrealistic about us implementing this initiative, it's going to take us six more months than it's doing it. And you should change it. This should be a living document, it should not be a document that just sits there. You need to have the ability to change those dates and the activities, or put something new in, and when it happens, you know, here's an opportunity, because you never know when the opportunity is going to show up. And you already have businesses that are calling you. So if you got a business that's calling, they might become a big priority at this time.
Anybody, anybody else have any questions?
We talked about three separate phases, and we talked a little bit about a timeline. Tell me, explain to us the timeline of the different phases through completion, or how, how long it takes place?
Normally, a, a process like this usually takes three to four months. And actually, the slowest part of it is getting the contract signed at the very beginning. We have already done a lot of homework, and staff was very nice to spend this afternoon with me and telling me about the footprint here. And again, I try to come in with fresh eyes to just absorb everything about, about the community. But we moved pretty quickly during our phase one and phase two. We're actually onsite, on the ground, so that we can meet with everybody. We wanna be living with the community with you. But typically, um, three months, that's kind of on the shorter end, but it's between three months and four months.
Any other questions? Okay, well, great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we have a wonderful community.
Okay, thanks. And you said Chico, is that, is that where Fresno State is?
Oh, no, we're on the other end of the state.
Other end of the state.
Other end of the state. Oh, we're not even as big as that.
Okay.
We're closer to Oregon.
Oregon, okay.
Yeah, yeah, north of Sacramento.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Are you on the side of California that's gonna fall off when the earthquake hits?
Oh, no, we're gonna stay. That's the rest of it. You know, they love us.
So you're gonna be, so y'all are gonna be beachfront property.
Yeah.
All right, well, great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. In the area where you get your own office. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna break for about five minutes or so, and then we'll bring the next group in. That'll be Angelo Economics.
So I like your ideas, having...
That's a great idea.
I know, I know, I think that's gonna be all that to do this. Yeah.
Get some more of the tail end, forty-three, five, maybe? Yeah, forty-three, five, it's cheap. Yes. Enjoy. It's the one, that is the most expensive, but Judy is a good experience. Oh, really? Is that included? Okay. That's for the wire, we, we, yeah.
That's on page twenty-six of the...
I mean, that may be stuff that we won't, but it seemed to me like...
Missed the deluxe seats with warmers and coolers and et cetera.
Thanks, my, my life, my... But you're, you're...
I'm afraid that most of the free, 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 they've gone three or four, six, or whatever, in percentage. Probably give you a good one, so I figured we're gonna be on our own. So I asked one of the fundos, it's a fifty-six, eight. This one, even at sixty-five, is still the most expensive. Yes, I thought that same thing, and it's getting paid very well, and, and very little cost to pay.
That's on golfing.
Very much so.
So wouldn't this really add to that work?
If there's two or more together, we can pass the hat, right?
But, you know, one of the key questions that always comes up, well, I don't wanna competition with the partners, it could be a totally different, I mean, it could be a totally different kind of sale, or retail.
See any reason that they shouldn't, for some reason, someone to talk about with... Should've told them we're gonna pay for them bad as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Hey, by the way, Chief. Yes, you are. I just wanted to, just, just in case you didn't realize it, I wanna tell you that everybody else does. Okay, good deal, she's, she's a sweet girl. Well, that's good, too, because I, because I told her if you ever did that kind of... You know, it's the only complaint I had, I was, I was in Austin, several, six days in the last... Five to seven months. The only complaint I ever got was they had to walk five around the corner. No one cared. No way to play tip, it was not like we're...
They're not gonna rush.
I mean, we, all the... You watch the news, I mean, there's some, you know, the banner, it's like, if I call it... Thing that has a sign up there, it has a little bit of that. I said, y'all must think, y'all must think that we're just weirdos up there. We're not, we're just...
Maybe.
So Pat, if you'll just keep us honest on the, just keep us honest on the times, okay? Okay, all right, good. Okay, let's go ahead and start here with the next presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity of letting us come here and talk about our methods and our approach, and our unique perspective in economic development, and how we believe we can help Stevensville achieve your economic development goals. I'll start by introducing our team. My name is William Miller, I am the Director of Project Operations for Angelo Economics. We also have, uh, where's the team? Okay. Irene Gina Pecus, she's our Business Development Manager. John Gatzunis, he's gonna be the Project Manager for this project. And we also have David Wallace with us here today, and he's an Associate with our Business Accelerator Program. So about Angelo Economics, we have been a firm for about twenty years. We've completed more than six hundred and fifty economic development strategies. We've completed these projects for communities around the US. We've done them for our cities, we've done them for small communities. As you can see by the cluster in Texas, a lot of our work has been done right here in the state of Texas, and much of that work for small communities such as Stevensville. For site selection work, we've cited more than eighteen billion in site selection deals. And again, much of that work has been done right here in the state of Texas. As we understand it, Stevensville has not really done a comprehensive economic development strategy before. You have an economic development component for your comp plan, but maybe that's the extent of it. So for the comprehensive economic development strategies, they're a little bit different. They've become a little bit more focused. They allow you to really create a roadmap for, for results, and for success, in your economic development initiatives. It's about what you can accomplish, you know, who does Stevensville wanna be? And, well, what do you want to accomplish? Uh, what you do wanna accomplish, from what we know, is business attraction, business expansion, business retention, and of course, the, the fourth side of that, which is entrepreneurship. You also have a four B sales tax election coming up in May. And you also have the opportunity, as we understand it, to create an economic development organization in tandem with that. So that's really an incredible opportunity that Stevensville has. Um, it's the perfect time to complete a strategy like this. And props to everybody here for recognizing that opportunity and making it happen. So how can we help you make that happen? We have a four approach plan for economic development strategies. It starts with stakeholder engagement, moves through market assessment, through target industry analysis, and then through to the action plan. For stakeholder engagement, begins with constructing a steering committee. And you've probably have already started, started to think about who your strategy, who your steering committee is going to be. Um, but it's about getting the right people at the table, and we can help you through that. We will conduct site visits, it's actually not atypical for during our initial site visit to meet with a hundred or more people, through one-on-one interviews, through focus groups. Uh, and then we follow up that with surveys. We have two tailored surveys, which we give to residents, and then also for the business community. The, there are two primary purposes for, for giving the surveys and doing the stakeholder engagement. One is information, obviously, everybody here are the experts in Stevensville, and we come in as outside consultant. We need to, to talk to the people here, we need to talk to the key stakeholders and find out what's happening on the ground. Uh, but the other part of that is community buying. You know, that begins right here tonight, with having the community here, and along, being here present, and... But it's about community buying, so being able to have the community there to support you along the way. We also offer website services, so we can build a website for you. This is where the surveys would be housed, the business and the resident survey. Uh, you can also put press releases and articles concerning the project along the way. So, and actually, if this is something that you find useful, we can hand the website over to you at the end to help create continued support for the project and see it through to the implementation. So the second phase is the market assessment. We'll benchmark Stevensville against two peer communities. Those communities could be your competitors, or they could be aspirational benchmarks. So we can, through conversations with you, decide who you want to be and where you want to go. Uh, and then when we get to the recommendations, then we can help you get there. We will look at economic factors such as business climate, workforce, education, quality of life, and also economic development programs. So we can review the economic development initiatives that you have already, either through the chamber, or other organizations. And then, so at the end of the day, it's about marketing. Again, who does Stevensville wanna be? Uh, what is it about Stevensville that makes it unique, and what is it about Stevensville that makes it competitive? It's about getting the word out there, and again, Angelo Economics can help you do that. So this is the, the type of analysis that we would conduct through our market assessment. Stevensville has strong foundations. We have strong labor force growth and population growth, which is actually outpaced the US average. And you have an educated class of citizens. If anything, we see low unemployment rate, and that coupled with the high labor force growth rate could mean that you have a shortage of labor, and that's something that we would want to look into. But what do you do with all of this data? Well, we put that into scorecards. So for each of the economic factors, such as business climate, workforce, education, it allows you to take a step back and see what it is that Stevensville is doing well. And it also allows you to see where you're doing not so well. And again, the purpose of this is for targeted marketing campaigns. So once you know what it is that you're doing well, and what it is that you're not, you can improve on the things that you're not, and mark the things that you are doing. And the third phase of the project is the target industry analysis. So we'll identify the major industries that are here in, in Stevensville, and we can create focused recommendations and help you promote and market those target industries. The benefit of the target industry analysis is it allows you to channel and focus your resources to the best and highest use. So you're not just going after every business that's out there, but you're going after the businesses and industries that are gonna provide the most value for Stevensville. We would begin by promoting the current, the industries that are currently here and have a strong presence. Those industries would be agriculture. Specifically within agriculture, dairy farming, which as we understand is about seventy percent of the agricultural community here. It would include education, with Charlton State University and Ranger Community College. Also, oil and gas, with FMC Technologies being one of the, the largest employers here in the city. We believe that there are more opportunities for that industry here in Stevensville. Uh, also manufacturing, and from what, what we saw in our initial analysis, medical device manufacturing. But we would also want to look at what are some aspirational target industries as well? So what are there, what industries are here that have the potential to grow? One of those we see is tourism. Uh, there are a lot of assets here in Stevensville, such as historical and cultural assets, that have the ability to, to bring more people into the area, uh, which can really only serve to improve the area and bolster retail. Also, the high-tech sector. Uh, this is something that we would pair with another industry, such as business support services, to really give you a well-rounded industry. Once we identify the target industries, we would detail the specific sectors within the industry that are unique to Stevensville. Um, we would call those niches. As I mentioned earlier, a couple of examples of niche markets would be the dairy farming for agriculture, and also the medical device manufacturing for the broader manufacturing sector. The niche markets would then be categorized by where they are in their industry lifecycle. Are they established, core markets, are they emerging markets? Or are those markets that were designated as diversification targets? Because really, that's what the target industry is about, is about creating a diverse economy, and being able to, for all of the target industries that are here in Stevensville to take root. These are the kinds of graphics that you can expect to come out of the target industry analysis. Outlining, uh, in this graph, such as the relative, the relative size of each industry, as well as its growth trends. Another part of the target industry analysis offers some optional services, such as reverse site selection and cost of operations. As a site selection firm, we bring a unique perspective to economic development. Angelo says more than thirty years of experience in site selection, and is one of the founding members of the Site Selection Guild. Through the right, the reverse site selection process, you'll get to see how site selectors come to communities, how they look at communities, and at the end of the day, you'll be able to know how site selectors... how they look at communities, and at the end of the day, you'll be able to know how site selectors think, and you'll be able to effectively sell your community to site selectors. The cost of operations is another tool that Stevenville would be able to use to competitively attract businesses. Through another benchmark analysis, you'll see how industries rank in terms of cost factors, the major cost factors being capital, labor, operations, and taxes. So you'll see what specific functional business areas where you are cost competitive, and again, what areas may not be. This allows for more targeted marketing campaigns. Once you know how you're cost-effective and how you're not, then you're better able to attract business investments to Stevenville. To sum it all together, we create industry dashboards. So one of these would be created for every industry that we identify. These would be marketing-ready materials that you would be able to put directly on your website or to send out to site selectors. The final phase of the project would be the strategic recommendations or the action plan. This is where the rubber meets the road. We've given you a bunch of data, a bunch of analysis, a bunch of marketing materials. Now, what do you do with it? AE is able to craft unique and tailored recommendations for Stevenville. Those recommendations will be geared towards sustainable economic development, public policy initiatives, and again, marketing initiatives. In addition, we'll address relevant issues such as land use planning, retail leakage, and again, how to effectively establish an economic development organization through the 4B sales tax. That would be done through the organizational assessment. We can advise the best way to structure the organization, be it through public or private, how best to handle operational decisions such as staffing or budgeting, what the best balance is between business recruitment versus expansion and retention. It could be a difficult balance to strike. We would then use another benchmarking analysis to determine how that, how your organization would be compared to other organizations of similar size and scope. The project would culminate with the implementation matrix. So here, we prioritize all the recommendations that we give you into short-term, medium-term, and long-term. Also, it would detail who would be responsible for implementing that particular recommendation. Once you're a client of AE, you're a client for life. We would be dedicated to the success of Stevenville because ultimately, if our clients are successful, we are successful. So we've given you quite a bit of data now about our process, but if we take a step back, you can see our process. We're four phases. We take you from the very beginning of the stakeholder engagements and helping you create the steering committee that's going to guide the long-term success of not only this project, but your city, all the way through to the end where we create actionable recommendations that can really make the difference for Stevenville. This is a quote that we really like. "The greatest danger for most of us is not that we aim too high and miss it, but that we aim too low and reach it." This is exactly the philosophy that we have at AE. We might put you out of your comfort zone a little bit in terms of what we're recommending, but you're going to be getting recommendations that are reasonable and attainable. At Angelus Economics, we have a reputation for results, particularly for small communities here in Texas. We built that reputation through long-term client support, through expert insights, and through innovative hands-on strategies. We're confident that Angelus Economics could not only meet your expectations for economic development, but we could exceed them. So before we go into questions, we have a question for you, which is what would constitute success for this project for Stevenville? We believe we have a pretty good idea, but...
Well, that's why we're here.
Okay.
I think that the success of this project will be the long-term sustainment of it and the future, you know, securing the economic future for the community. So I think we've got some questions we'd like to toss your way.
Okay.
Go from there, since it's council.
Everything?
Of course.
Okay.
Doug's here, isn't he? He's got questions.
Thanks, friend. You mentioned the term leakage. I've heard that term a lot. I know unemployment, the first thing you try to do instead of hiring new employees is stop the employees that are leaving. If you'll give me, you've used that phrase tonight. Talk about some of your experience in cities our size, similar type geographics where we're close enough to a metroplex, et cetera, or rural versus urban, and the type of community that you've said you've mentioned, you know, you've kind of done some pre-research on us. Give me some examples, the type of leakage that caused the most economic loss to a community our size.
I would say that the largest sector of that would be retail. A good example of that would be the city of Flugerville, which is just five miles north of Houston or Boston. So as Flugerville was growing, a lot of the residents, they were a bedroom community for the city of Austin. So the residents would live there, but they would do their shopping, they would work in Austin. But through an economic development strategy that we were able to do for Flugerville, it allowed them to build a tax base through business formations. So once you started getting people working in Flugerville, people were there during the day, then it allowed more opportunities for retail to come in and establish, particularly restaurants. And that's kind of where it starts from there, and kind of snowballs, so to speak. So it's about getting people to stay in the community. For Flugerville, it was about getting people to work there, providing jobs there, businesses, and then the retail following.
I think it's insightful. You know, my experience has been we, if you look at our median income, we don't have a really high median income, so lots of folks leave here, therefore, Dallas or wherever, to get a job because they pay more. And I think you're right that we end up to go to the restaurants there, and on the way back, they'll stop at Best Buy or whatever. And so we, I think it's sales taxes that is probably the biggest thing we lose as a city government, but also the economy itself and money flowing back through Stevenville that's going to Granbury, Weatherford, Fort Worth, and so on. I think it's insightful. Thank you.
Other questions?
We are also interviewing two other companies for this. And I would just like to see if you could share with us why you are better than the other two and why we should pick you over them.
Sure. I believe that's because of our unique perspective as site selection consultants. So we understand the process of bringing business to a community. Economic development, as I mentioned at the beginning, is really about, the results of it would be business attraction, retention, expansion, and entrepreneurship. We have a lot of experience in developing entrepreneurial strategies, which are particularly important for small communities. You probably know this, but the majority of job creation is done through entrepreneurship, through startups, through small business. And creating that sort of, that sort of tax base, that sort of business base is what's going to set Stevenville apart and allow you to grow. So, yeah, I guess to answer your question, it would be the unique perspective that we have in terms of knowing what brings businesses to a community?
That's a good answer. I have another one.
Go ahead.
We have always struggled with annexation and land use, future land use plan. Will this help us with that? I know you identified targets for, you know, covering the leakage and so forth and industries that we don't have that would help create better-paying jobs.
Right.
But what about those two items, annexation and future land use?
Let me follow that up with a question. So we know a little bit about the industrial park here. Is there, are there currently any companies in that industrial park? Or is it in the planning stages?
We don't have an industrial park at this time.
Is it, it's on planning stages?
There are no plans for one at this time. That's what we're looking for help with also.
Okay. Well, that is something that we have experienced doing. A good example of that would be P. Montana. They're a little bit larger than Stevenville, about 30,000 people, but they had, just starting to get up an industrial park, and that's part of their larger land use planning, or land use plan. But helping to design the park in the best way possible to bring in the investments that they need, of being able to structure the park in a way that allows you to get the best and highest use off of the land and speed.
And my final question, it was mentioned earlier that we don't have an interstate nearby. It's 20 miles away. We have Highway 377, Highway 281, and 67 that are major state highways. In your opinion, is that adequate for growth of industry in our community as far as transportation goes, goods and services?
Right. I will say that it's not going to prevent Stevenville from growing. You know, it's not as ideal as being located along a major thoroughfare, but as long as you're facilitating the business growth through entrepreneurship and through business attraction, retention, and expansion, once you get the companies here, that will provide the incentive that people will need to come off of the major thoroughfares and come to Stevenville. So maybe it's not the perfect situation, but I will say that I don't, I don't believe that that's going to hold you back in any significant way.
Thank you.
Other questions? Are you in line or cheering?
Yeah, you've got unemployment at 3.4%. The employees are median income, so I don't know if you're... Maybe that's your guess on that.
My first guess would be cost of living, cost of doing business. So, you know, the costs associated of living here in Stevenville are not going to be the same as living in Fort Worth or Dallas or Austin, so that you can, you can get by with a lower median income than you can in other places.
Alan, did you have a question?
Yeah, sure. I'm curious. We're trying and looking objectively at these proposals, and we've got three on the table, basically.
Sure.
Looking at the services and looking at the proposals, yours is significantly higher. Tell me why you're worth 50% more than the other people.
Well, again, it's our experience, our unique perspective. We've been around a long time. We've worked in a lot of communities. We know what the unique challenges are faced by small communities. We also know what the strengths are. I'll say it's our, it's our expertise, and it's our name recognition. I believe that we can offer you a strategy that's going to, that's going to accomplish your economic development needs. Okay. Thank you.
So let me, let me ask a question then that's going to help you answer Alan's question.
Sure.
And you can thank me later. I think it's interesting, and I would, I mean, Yanis, your degree is in journalism.
That's correct.
And William, your degree is in economics.
Right.
And your founder has a degree in economics. And you've talked about your strengths being site selection from an industry perspective, okay? There's two types of people that do what you do. There are marketers and there are economists. So why is an economist better prepared to help a city over a marketer? And what is a journalism major doing, carrying the flag for us? Because I also understand the significance of the project manager on site with the success of a project. So, and before you answer that, also help me understand how you're going to gather data that's useful in a community this size, that it's not in an MSA or other area where there's readily available economic data to help you? Because I don't, I don't want you to give us the metroplex MSA as an indicator of what our potential is.
Right. That wouldn't be very useful to you.
No, it wouldn't.
So the data sources that we use, the ACS, the American Community Survey through the US Census Bureau, does offer statistics for small communities. They are not updated as regularly as they would be for larger cities, but the data is available. So that we would, we would feel comfortable in being able to provide the data specific to Stevenville. To answer your other questions, why is an economic degree important for economic development? And that would be, you know, the ability for data analysis. But even from a journalist's background, Yanis has a lot of experience in being able to gather and procure data and analyze it in a way that ultimately needs to be done.
So you're, the danger we have in picking you is that we don't have a staff that is ready to digest a bunch of analytical data.
We do that for you.
Okay. Yeah. Help us understand how you do that.
Okay. So we'll provide to you the data that we believe is going to be relevant to you. Also, if there's any data that you believe that you want to have, then we can, we can work to come up with that as well. But through the reports that we generate for you and the presentations that we give you, we will take the data and translate that into a way that's easily digestible. In order to read and understand our reports, you don't have to have a degree in economics.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one other. We have two organizations represented here tonight that have, in a sense, created a business incubator and by giving some opportunity for some developed business in town. I got to participate in some in the metroplex of business incubator. Talk about that a little bit and how that would help a community like ours because one of the things we also want to focus on is there are, you use the word entrepreneurialship, that's obviously a very important factor, but you also have minority-owned businesses and so on, and that sometimes incubators are like, that sort of, so how would you use that? Or would you, have you used that in the past? How would you recommend we use it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think incubators programs can be, you know, a fantastic tool to create economic development. That is something we have worked with in the past. Actually, Angelus himself has founded an accelerator program in Austin, so we're very familiar with the way that those types of programs work and the way that they run. The way that they can be helpful for communities is, as I mentioned, entrepreneurship is a really valuable way to promote economic development. It's one of the primary ways that it's done. And so being able to offer support to small businesses to help them, you know, grow from startup into being able to kind of operate and provide on their own. So incubator programs are definitely very valuable. We would recommend it. We have the know-how of how they work, and we can work with the programs that are already here and make sure that they are, you know, efficient in the way that they are returning out there for startups in Stevenville.
We have a couple of minutes. Anything from the audience?
I just be curious. You mentioned you did Bute. They obviously started with an industrial park that was going a whole new direction because they had the old mining industry and it was dead.
Right.
So how did you do it? What timeframe did you take it? How did you decide which direction to go? You sitting in the middle of a little valley and you can't even get into it by rail or anything else. Airplane's hard to get in, though.
Yes, that's right. So that was something that was about six months prior to we did it for them. And you're right, it was difficult. They didn't really know what direction to take it. But through, through the target industry analysis, by identifying what industries that they have, what industries have a currently strong presence there, it kind of helps steer the direction of that conversation. So I would say it was through that report and identifying what they have. And really, they got a lot of support from the county as well.
But it really didn't matter starting point. That's my, my question. How would you define that starting point?
Through something unlike the target industry analysis and deciding what industries were there and what industries would be viable for, for that type of park.
Okay. I have one question. Your question?
Jane Anderson on page five, project manager. She has a certified economic developer with 30 years of strategic planning. Can we count on her being part of your team for this job if you were hired?
She could be.
What if it was contingent upon having her work for us?
All of our staff would be available to work on projects. So right now, the way we see it is the team that we brought here today, but...
Right. I don't mind her not being here. I just want to know if she's going to work on our project if we hire you.
If it was contingent upon that?
Sure. Thank you.
Mayor Wirth. Okay, so I got one last question I want to ask you, and the folks in the audience don't have the luxury of having looked at your proposal you submitted, but in it you have a number of questions that you've asked. For example, that you say in your proposal that you will provide answers, like how well does local infrastructure support economic growth? How healthy are local real estate markets? How does staff fund and organize local EDOs to lead the economy? What is the educational and training capacity of regional institutions? Do you guarantee a substantive answer to all those questions you've listed in here as a part of your product?
We, through the proposals that we've given you, we would work with you and decide what, I mean, everything in there, we're obviously capable of giving you, but through the conversations that we have with you, we determine the things that are going to be most relevant, the things that are most important to Stevensville. So we would answer all of the questions that we need to in order to get you to outcomes that you need.
Okay. Well, my assumption is you're going to answer all of them because they were all good questions, and if you're telling me you're not, then that's going to help my decision.
We can answer all of them.
Good answer.
Sandy, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you all very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, we'll break in about five minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did, yeah, I did.
Well, Dean, he was a little bit ago. He's not going to recycle much.
We're faithful.
Mundon Associates, we are a consulting firm. And we provide professional advice in the fields of economic development and city planning and civil engineering. We are multidisciplined. So, we know that all the issues and ideas are not one discipline, that a city is involved with many, many things that you have to deal with. And sometime it takes a little bit of engineering, sometime it takes a little bit of city planning and a lot of economic development to come up with the vision or the mission or any action that you want to bring forward. And Mundon Associates can provide this multidisciplined approach to your economic development strategic plan. We have, with combined staff, over a hundred years of professional experience. And that gives you the opportunity to really establish innovative solutions to the problems, taking a little bit from the past, learning a little bit from history, taking advantage of the visualization and the experience that we have brought forward and happening, things that are happening across Texas and across the United States. One of the things that we are very proud of is our award-winning opportunities that we allow for cities, again, to establish their brand, to recognize the citizen achievement, that the citizens in advising the council would have an opportunity. Recently, one of our communities, La Bonne, Texas, received the Texas Economic Development Excellence Award with the Texas Economic Development Council. And that's an award that the Texas Economic Development Council establishes for economic development corporations if they meet certain guidelines. And so, that's an example of one of the award-winning opportunities that we've taken. When I was working with the town of Sunnyvale, one of our achievements was the expansion of a major tile manufacturer that was in Sunnyvale, Texas. And we were advising their economic development corporation in the work that they were doing across the city. But this opportunity came up with an existing tile manufacturer, and it was called American Marazzi Tile at the time. It's changed a little bit with ownership. But we competed with Japan and with Mexico for that plan, and the hometown won. And that's not a real big city, but it was a very invigorating city. And it won the Greater Dallas Chamber Award for that particular year. So, we work hard at making the communities competitive. And we're not afraid to compete with Japan or Mexico. They're good neighbors, some close, some far. But all of the towns in Texas can be very proud of the achievements of Texas. We've done it all together. You're part of the DFW Metroplex. You're part of the North Central Texas Council of Governments. The DFW Metroplex has led Texas and has led the nation in job creating in the last few years. And we'd like to make sure that Stevensville is part of that exciting opportunity that we have in the DFW area. And we're, you know, looking at the opportunities with Stevensville and taking it to that next level and getting you up there in excellence. Our mission statement for Mundon Associates is to provide those opportunities and options for making great places. We always evaluate everything in terms of economic development on jobs and dollars invested. That's the old-fashioned way of saying, that's how economic development is achieved, is it dollars and investment. You know, there's a whole lot of other things that go into it. But ultimately, in the end, the voters are going to say to this council, and they're going to say to the economic development corporation, what have you done for us this year? In terms of your strategic plan, how many jobs have you created or assisted in creating? And what is the increase in the investment level that has occurred in Stevensville? So, those are important things that we keep in mind in giving you opportunities and options for making Stevensville a great place. So, those are some of the things that we look at. I want to point out that Mundon Associates protects the space and we're proud of you, Texas. I got here as soon as I could in 1986. I wasn't native born, and I immediately apologize. But in high school, I was riding Appaloosa horses and came to Fort Worth and rode in some pleasure horses in Fort Worth and decided I wanted to come to Texas. It took me a while, but I finally got here. And we enjoy the Texas culture, and certainly, economic development has been successful for Texas and for this general DFW area. I am a certified economic developer. This is sort of one of those things that you achieve through a lot of hard work. I have a master's degree. My master's degree is from the University of Texas at Arlington. And experienced a great number of years, thirty-plus years in the profession, continuing education. And to achieve the level of certified economic developer, if you hire us as a certified economic developer, you're going to short-circuit the experiment. You're going to make sure that your happenings will happen so that it brings the jobs and investment. We know in terms of economic development what it takes and are nationally recognized as the CECD through the International Council of Economic Development. So, we'd like to certainly be a part of your success. And those goals that you establish and those strategies, they're going to be winning goals and strategies. And something, yes, we want to be visionary, and yes, we want to be exciting, and yes, we want to include the whole community. And the whole community is something beyond the city limits, goes well out into the county. And they, with a little bit more of market analysis, go well beyond that. But we want you to be exciting, but we want to make sure that those are winning actions in the end that are affordable and can be done and bring in those jobs and those investments. Introduce a little bit more, a little bit about the team. I'm the president of Mundon Associates. We are a women-owned firm. And also, within the firm is Joe Mundon, my husband, and Jason Mundon, our son. Jason Mundon is an economic developer and a civil engineer. He's a graduate of UTA, UT Austin, excuse me. And he is into both of those professions. So, I call him the builder. We make sure that when we're doing economic development, that we have the capability to move dirt. And so, as he brings a lot of expertise to the decisions that we move forward with. And I would like to say that I have a track record for jobs and investment. One of my greatest achievements was the creation of the Rockwall Technology Park. I was Rockwall's first economic developer, and they were a, say, a bedroom community of Dallas. And one of the questions I asked them, that I would ask Stevensville, is what do you want to be? And Rockwall's answer was, we don't want to be a bedroom community. We want to have our own industry. So, they went about, and I showed them how to achieve that, which is the first step of getting an industrial park so you have jobs. Jobs are what creates the rooftops. Jobs are what create the retail. The retailers would love, every retailer that you ever want would love to come to Stevensville if they can make a profit. And you can go on the website of your famous retailer, any one of them, just pick one, and look up real estate, and they'll give you the criteria that they need to make a profit. They need X number of people, they need a square feet available. So, we'll work with you on the winning strategies of those retailers or those industries that will best fit Stevensville to make it happen. And so, Jason Mundon would have been here tonight, but he had a death in his family. His wife's grandmother had passed away, so he isn't able to be with us tonight. But he certainly will be here, working as a team with us. I'd also like to invite, and if we would need more, we could bring more, but I'd like to invite the opportunity because you have university students here, college students, to maybe participate in some of the action, either on a mentoring basis or actually participate. And I'll show you that a little later in the exam. But we understand that you're going, have opened the opportunity for the voters to select an economic development sales tax, and the election is in vain. So, in terms of setting up your strategic plan, we'd like to take the first two months and concentrate on some things that will give you, the voter, some information that will be helpful in deciding whether this is the route you want to go, if you want your economic development corporation to lead the charge for new jobs and new investment. So, what we're going to do is right away, like, if you would hire us, next week, we'll be here to begin your economic market study, to define the market, use the demographic analysis, and come up with those trends that are going to help define your economy. And we will create what we call fast fact tools. And it could be used electronically, or it could be in paper form. Will you give your voters the opportunity to know some things about your market that will help guide those visions for the future, those goals and strategies and actions? The Nielsen Company, and I think you probably have heard about the Nielsen Company, do the ratings for the television programs, but they also have a very detailed demographic section. And they've come up with what they call lifestyle segments. So, they take the demographics for your community and divide those into various groups, which further help you define what your market is and where you can go in terms of attracting the retail part of the economy. But we'll get those things done by the first month so that you could begin to use that as tools for the decision-making on your economic development corporation and the use of your sales tax. The next thing that we would like to very much begin to get involved is the community at large. They will be voting on your issue. And establish a website, a Twitter account, Facebook account, and begin some interaction with your community in terms of economic development, information and market knowledge that they might use for aid in helping them in their vote. We would like to have a two-day charrette. I think it's a French word. But really, what this is, is an opportunity for two days where we can come in and possibly, maybe even use this room or some room in the city council proper, because it's close to the square and Washington Street. Or people could come in and maybe go through a couple of exercises that we'll lay out, give them little pieces of post-it notes to make some important statements, and ask them some questions, maybe have some aerials here of Stevensville where we can talk about what it is that they want in terms of economic development, which will give the council the beginning of a basis of some of the guidance that the voters and the citizens of the community are looking for. We'd also, in those first two months, hold stakeholder interviews, having questionnaires available, hoping to get fifty returns, and I think we probably could get fifty returns. These would be questionnaires, again, over the same ideas and questions. Some of the questions that we would include, for example, is what is your vision for Stevensville in the next ten years? What about in the next twenty years? Do you want to be thirty thousand people? How big do you want? Do you want to be fifty thousand people? Would you just as soon go back and be a small town and maybe get rid of half your town and be only ten thousand people? What was your vision? And begin to bring out some of those ideas so that we know when we get to the second half of the strategic plan, what's your citizens and the stakeholders. The stakeholders will include your city council and decision-makers, potential candidates or any directors of the economic development corporation, your educational institutions here in town. Definitely, those leaders should be included, Chamber of Commerce, school district, important stakeholders that have a slice of the pie that's necessary to make the whole pie grow and prosper in Stevensville. Then we'll finish up, maybe just prior to the vote, sort of at the end of April, with a focus group where we'll put together the SWOT analysis. That's the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And these are sort of guideposts. What are the strengths of Stevensville? Those are the things we market. What are the weaknesses of Stevensville? These are the things that we need to work on in the next five, ten years. What are those opportunities that are coming up? Are we drinking more milk or drinking less milk? Is that an opportunity? Is education important to the community? These are the type of things that we should look at. What about this oil and gas industry? Are there opportunities remaining, or is the profit all been taken? What are those opportunities out there that we need to be grabbing hold of and taking forward? And what are those looming threats that we have out there that we need to not necessarily solve, but be aware of? Is water an issue in terms of your growth? What are those other threats that are out there that we might have to be dealing with? But you end up, at the end of your first two months, with sort of the basis upon which to make a decision of whether you really have identified your economic base in the community, and what are those opportunities and threats and strengths and weaknesses that you could take forward to make Stevensville's strategic plan moving forward.
Pam, I just want to, you've got about four minutes left for your presentation.
Then, following the May election, the May election, we'll complete the target market analysis, which is taking a look at the top employers and where the economy is in the DFW area, and target those industries that will have an opportunity within Stevensville. Establish the vision. Where do you want Stevensville to be? And what is the mission to achieve that vision? And where are those goals that will take that mission forward? What are the strategies that will make the goals work? What actions do we have to take this year and next year? How much is it going to cost? And maybe some organizational and implementation tools that we would suggest for the strategic plan and the economic development organization that you'll be forming. We're also going to include estimated costs where it's possible to help you guide in the capital improvements program that may be associated with some of those strategic elements. We'll move forward with this in a six-month program and have a, at the end of six months, have the plan report and a brochure that you can market the opportunities that you've scheduled. And we certainly look forward to working with Stevensville. And we'd like you to select Mundon Associates. We think it's a great opportunity, and it's a great community to work with. Questions?
Thank you. Questions?
I'll go real quick.
Okay.
Just a quick one. What is economic or incentive deal-making? What does that mean?
Incentive deal-making, that is, when you put the deal together. We work with the economic development corporation and the council in putting together a deal that would bring new jobs and new investment to the community. For example, you wanted to have a new pipe manufacturer come to Stevensville, and they are looking for a ten-acre site. And you have a seven-acre site and a fifteen-acre site. And you begin to negotiate on the price of that, and they say, well, we'd like the fifteen-acre site because it would probably bring us more opportunity to advance in the future, but we can't afford fifteen acres. We don't have the money for the difference between the ten and five. And then the deal would be, where are we going to get the funds for the additional five acres or value of the land? And we've worked with the city and the EDC in coming up with resolutions for that. Need an extension of a water line. Create the deal that is going to make that come to Stevensville. It's usually done in the form of an agreement form. We put together the deal points and work with your attorneys on assembling the agreement itself. But we would assist the board in leading the deal-making. We do those on a daily basis, and we know what's positive and needed and what's out of line. When a client would be asking for something that's out of line, and we can assist you in making those jobs and those investments happen by bringing that deal to you.
How would you help us find the deal, though?
How would we help you find the deal? Well, I would say, within the DFW area, we've been in the DFW area, you know, since the mid-eighties. We know where the deal-makers are. We know the brokers. We would, once your strategic plan is defined and we know what your targets are, we'll begin to work those targets. Two of the things that we do is we go to trade shows that are in the DFW area, the Texas Deal-Making Show, which is all retail, the Netcore Show, which is all investors. We know the people there. We can bring them here. There is, the state of Texas has a designated economic developer. I am one of those. We get the leads right from the governor's office. If they fit Stevensville, we'll bring them to you.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a question. Pam, I was looking through the prospectus here and kind of comparing it to a couple of the others, and I noticed on page five, it says, "Completed strategic plans for Texas communities, including Little Elm, Marina, Sunnyvale, Rockwall, and Midlothian." But my question is, the other two that have presentations for us tonight have lists of four or five recent references of contact people that, you know, we can contact, you know, do some question-asking about, you know, your services. Did I miss that page?
I'd be happy to provide those, you know, at any time. For example, I was just thinking, I was driving through here, Mineral Wells is just up the road, and John Warren was the finance director there. You can call him. I worked with John when he was in Marina and when he was city manager there in putting together their initial strategic plan. So, certainly welcome. And I'd be happy to give you others. Kay Wright, who is from La Bonne, Texas, we just completed an update of their strategic plan. And there's several more that would be happy to provide you.
Thank you, Pam.
Other questions? Anybody from the audience have any questions?
Just wanted to, Pam, with mental jobs and dollars invested, tools, economic development. You know, one thing we have here in Munich, and I think it's unique for us, is that we have actually low unemployment, but we also have a low median income. How do we get that average median income up?
That, you know, a lot of that depends on working with your educational institutions to upgrade some of the talents and educational level of the residents within the community. That's one way. Another way is to work on the small business development. And I'm a entrepreneur. I started our business. So, I'm familiar with small business development. Your small business development corporations across the state of Texas can help, but working on your entrepreneurship as well as the higher education and the training. Not all of that has to lead to a master's degree. We have a shortage of plumbers and electricians all over the Metroplex. We have a shortage of carpenters right now because of the building industry. So, the building trades need training as well. And some of those things can be done in the Metroplex or special training brought here to bring those opportunities.
Okay. Other questions? Anybody? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah. Okay. I think what I'd like to do, if y'all don't mind, once Pam's left the room, I think it'd be very valuable for the council just to hear from those that have come tonight, if there's any reactions or comments that you have from the presentations tonight. And I don't know, who wants to start first?
I want to go first.
Okay.
I'd like to go first, so, you know, I don't have to ask, but this is.
Smart man.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if I'm speaking really as a Ranger College or Figuror community member, but I think, you know, one of the things they kept on asking is, what are we hoping to accomplish? And, you know, thinking of Golden Lock, you know, I was looking at it that way, you know, cold boards, hot boards, just right, you know, that's what I was hoping for. And then also, Texas is a big field for me, you know, people who have experience in Texas or live in Texas and know what's happening in Texas. But are you after a fuzzy good feeling, you know, from one of these people, or are you after results? And I think, you know, looking at those, without having, you know, seen the proposals and being able to have a basis on, you know, deliverables versus cost, what are they going to give you for how much it's going to cost? You know, I would say we have to answer the question that they all asked, who do we want to be? And I know you're trying to use them to answer some of that question, but answer that in a way where you can make a decision on which one we want to choose. You know, hey, this is what we want to grow, we'll do fifty thousand, like you said, and then pick one that has more site selected. You know, they can find a business to move in, or you want to do this. So, I know we've had most of that answered already, too. We want to be, what we want to be, you know.
Okay. That's good. Heather, cut this one.
Just a couple comments. I think we saw a great variety of consultants here tonight, some of which were talking from the heart, getting into who the people are and what you need and want and so on, and others that were very quantitative, who would give you the facts, and those facts would determine what you should be. Hopefully, you'll come to the same conclusions that they have from the facts. I think you need a mix of them, and I think we saw it at least tonight. I think you need to take a real solid look at what it is you want to be, but you need to do it very realistic. So that you've got the hard facts, but you've got some idea of what turns this community on and what makes this community run on an ongoing basis. It's not just the facts of the community, it's the people that are here. And so, we've got to get a read on that as well. I particularly liked the last presentation because they started, they gave you some help before the election and helped define the process a little more specifically than the others. The others may do it that same way, but I didn't hear them talk about anything until after the decision was made and.
Well, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about all three of the firms starting now.
Yes.
The two didn't address it.
They didn't address it. You're right. Okay.
And I have.
I just wanted to clarify that. We're.
I hope that's most important.
Yeah. They all, they all understand that it's immediate. In fact, there was one firm that did not submit a proposal because, and it was one of the leading firms on the state, they couldn't start anything until about July, and we told them that was too late, that we were ready to start now once the selection.
And you may have the deliverables in your proposals there in terms of what they're delivering now.
Yes. Right. Okay. Well, thank you.
I guess I'll go next. I have to say, I agree with Dr. Emmerchek in that the Angelo, Rangelo economics, I think they're going to be great at putting a whole lot of numbers out there for us, but I think that's going to be one of those strategic plans that's going to sit on the shelf because it's intimidating and it has a lot of numbers on it that are just going to sit on the shelf. The other two, I believe, could probably come up with a more realistic start, help strategic plan for Stevensville.
I feel like we're going to have to engage, whoever we have is going to have to engage the entire community. And the community of Stevensville, I really believe, is not one to be very receptive of the second group. I just, personally, that, I had a, whoa, that's going to be a little hard here. And so, one of three would be my pick for, going to go from there. And so one in, one in three would be my pick for, I'm gonna go from there. The lady from Texas brings the Texas perspective. And the lady from California brings a totally different perspective on the outside. Our lady from Texas, she's already been in the Metroplex, she's already got, she's already in there. So are we going to be adversely affected by her contacts already there? Is she already so connected that when those opportunities comes, come up, is she going to direct towards Stevensville? That would be my only concern with her. So I think that's something maybe.
That's a great point. Okay. Mr. Brown?
The last lady kept bringing up the facts, just the facts. But you're gonna need, you, we're gonna need more than that. I like the idea about the two days of gathering information because you don't need just the max of numbers of what they can do. You're gonna need to input everybody in the community to see more of what the wants are. What do we wanna be? The last lady brought up a shortage of, what would you call that, ten year type labor? Plumber, carpenter, contractor? You know, if we go back to nineteen seventy-six, our high school's got a technology building built down there that serviced those needs. Not everybody needs a master's degree. Who's gonna remodel your house? Who's gonna fix your car? We can meet that need here in Stevensville. That's more of an economic boost and it's not as much as, but it's the same as an economic boost from these folks.
Okay.
My perception was that Pam, the last one, she, she might have a good one. And that's who I would wanna work with. I would want somebody that doesn't see things the way I do, that has the same values that I do. She's familiar with Texas people, how things work. Is that a detriment? Maybe it is, because she may be already formed a alliance with another town that she worked with. I don't know if that's true. If you're gonna try to sell this to Stevensville, you're gonna try to sell it to me. And I kinda think that I'm a lot like a lot of the people in Stevensville. So, and she sold it. So I think if you're wanting to have success that way, that's how I would win. Not follow down.
Yeah, that's good.
Thanks, Scott.
Scott, you go.
Okay, one thing that might sway us quite a bit, too, and maybe we're not privy to that information, is the cost differential. It was brought up about one of the groups was significantly more expensive. So, you know, first of all, are we comparing apples to apples in the different groups? And also, too, if we are getting apples and apples, then costs should be a factor.
Like, I mean, I can just generically say, one in three were almost knows equal. And number two was, was a third higher than that, than those two.
Can I go ahead and tell them the numbers there? Because they seem to be interested in them.
Well, yeah, I guess mid, mid forties on the, on the one in three and mid sixty on the middle. So.
I would just like to add one comment, because we mentioned, a couple of people mentioned the credentials of the last. To hold the credential she holds, economic development credential. There are very few in between, and they're all pretty good people. They've worked in the business for a long time, and they've worked with a number of clients. I don't think you need to worry about the loyalty coming through with that credential.
Right. If anything, I guess that would leverage within the community because of the credentialing, I guess. Okay.
I have a question for Pat, I may.
Sure.
Pat, on the first presentation from Chavon, I understand that Audrey Taylor has some ties to this area?
Well, conversation with her, her husband's involved with loping and things like that. And so has a number of people that he knows in Stevensville area through rodeo pop events.
So I guess a question I'd like to ask, based on a comment that was made. It was interesting to me, the first presentation included a comment about understanding agriculture in a college town in an agricultural community, though it's an agricultural college town in California. And Scott's left, and he's the guy that brought it up. But is that a, is that a good thing or a bad thing? This is something that, when you talk about being able to relate to, or people from Stevensville being able to relate to the person that's coming to talk, if they know they're from an agricultural college town, does that create the same connection as somebody that's from a suburb of Dallas called Rockwall? I mean, which are we more connected to?
Chico State is, like you said, that's way up there. And I'm from the other end of California, so, and I got here quicker than I could also.
Yeah, Willie, you can give us a great perspective.
I have a, my brother's brother-in-law attended Chico State. He's now consultant, an ag consultant, crop ag consultant. But anyway, my point is, I would say Chico State is, or Chico is more like Stevensville than Rockwall. There is two kinds of Californians. There's San Francisco, California, and the rest of the state. It's, it's, it's not big a difference. I do believe that the folks of Stevensville could relate very well with that one. I don't see that being a detriment. I think sometimes Pam stressed a little too much, the, her acquaintances and reliance and knowledge of DFW. We are in the North Central Texas DFW area, there's no doubt. But I do think we are uniquely Stevensville, and I'd like to see it stay that way.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that's a very good point, because knowing DFW is not the same as knowing Eraz County and Stevensville. And we are unique in a lot of ways, and I, I don't wanna lose that. And I, if you're not careful, if you try to make us like the Metroplex, you're gonna lose some of that.
Right. And Ellen, that's why I wanted to bring us back to that point, because you and I know that Rockwall's a really different place than Stevensville.
Oh, certainly.
And so to think that it is an ag town with a college in it may be, and it, a perspective that can relate to us more than we think.
Right.
You know? So sharing.
Well, and then the other thing she mentioned was that, which I think is important, and it may be a recognition of the fact, this is the first lady that Chavon brought in, was noting our square, and obviously they did drive through the town. And those things are part of the character of the town. The other thing I liked about the first presentation is they have this fellow, which we all don't have the stuff we do, but the, this Dawn, really interesting last name fellow, who does the site surveys, which, and, and they're, look like they're perhaps more large industry oriented, which is actually the thing, in my view, that drives all the other stuff. Because, speaking as a retail person, and I agree entrepreneurship is important, all those things. We do provide a lot of jobs. We provide a lot of low-paying jobs a lot of times. I mean, to just be frank about it. And unless, and even chain retail coming in, those are still hourly wage jobs. I like the fact that they appear to have some experience with getting industrial parks going, those sorts of things. Those things also, when they locate into your town, do not particularly change the characteristics of your town. You don't, you know, like, see a little more traffic. But we've got, Stevensville's got large vacant areas where you could easily locate, you know, there an industrial park or an adjunct to something that manufactures something for FNC, something like that. And I don't know that the town would feel its character had altered much, but those would be very, a lot higher paying type jobs. And that first group seemed to have a feel both for the small-town aspect as well as the experience with some heavier industry, manufacturing, things like that, that, that are really where the, the good jobs come from. The other stuff then follows. You do get the retail and the other things later. And she mentioned tourism and that aspect, too, which is also important, but we can only do so much.
For the, for the audience, let me read something, Ms. Taylor, the, from Chavon, might not have spoke to some of her qualifications as much as some of the others. Let me read a portion of, of her bio. She's a frequent speaker and instructor on the subject of economic development, marketing, and community readiness. A fellow instructor for economic development courses and co-authored economic development guides with Amari Foreman out of Washington State. She has received the prestigious Golden Bear Award for her vision, drive, enthusiasm, creativity, and commitment to the economic development profession. That's just, she's got thirty-four years of experience in economic development, with her expertise being in economic development, roadmaps, and initiatives, community assessments, marketing, sector strategy, pardon me, sector strategies, organizational structure and capacity.
Okay. Doug, did you have a?
I had a couple of things. First is, we're talking about an investment in the economic development of Stevensville, Texas for long-term. And so the amount of money, I wanna address that issue of how much we spend on this contract. I don't think we're in a bidding process in this, in this. So to me, whether it's forty thousand or seventy-six thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, we need to get what's best for Stevensville, because over the next twenty years, that, we're talking about multiples of returns, you know, multiples of multiples. So I think that the issue of how much it costs right now is not the, and y'all in the council know there's nobody who dislikes spending money more than I do. But I think this is an investment, not necessarily just the cost of doing business. That's one thing. The second thing is, probably because of, we have an election coming in May, we kinda, everybody, everyone in the council kinda felt behind the eight ball to push this to get it going because of an opportunity of voting, because we only have two opportunities here to do that. We, are we trying to make a decision tonight on one of these three, because that's what we have? Or I want us to make sure that one of these three is what we wanna have? You know, or don't make a decision because we're in the eight ball, behind the eight balls, make a decision. And then I guess the third question would then be, did we hear anything tonight that we couldn't have done ourselves? You know, is there anything in here? Is it, because if it's just manpower, well, we can hire manpower. Is it strategy that we don't have? Well, that's hopefully what they bring to us. Is there something that, a vision that we don't have? I kept asking, some of the questions I asked were about vision. And so do you have vision that we don't have? And I think that that's probably, I heard it from some of the comments here tonight, as well as I've heard it from the citizens in the phone calls and emails, is, well, what do we want to be? You know, what is, what is Stevensville gonna be like? And so you're exactly right. That's one of the reasons I'm asking for someone to come here to do that, to help us as a community to develop that. I wouldn't want them to tell us what that is, but to help us develop what that is. You know, Mr. Moore, when he came, made his two presentations, that's the first thing he said. You know, what's the city, was it, where you did is, where you city man?
Roanoke.
Roanoke. You know, it was a re- unique, really unique situation. And they had to define what they wanted to become because they were landlocked. Look at the city of Stafford, Texas. I just wanna, I just put it out there, mention to some of y'all here. City of Stafford has no ad valorem taxes. Just think about that. No property taxes. They're a landlocked city. They had to make a definition. Here's what we want to become as a city. They used that as an opportunity to decide, here's where we're going with our economic, our four B, four A stuff. And their city is, the revenue's there, and they don't have self, they don't have property taxes. How do you do that? Well, they had to grow their bid, their city, had to grow their, their economy. And they did it being landlocked. Sugarlands of the north, you know, every, every place, there's no place to go. We have to make that decision, what we're gonna be, because we don't have two or three million dollars a year in EDC funds to help recruit a bunch of big stuff. So we're gonna have to be very targeted in what we do. And that's gonna be, I think, the hardest thing for the city to do. So the question is, is one of these three people who came tonight gonna be able to help us do that? If they can't, then I would say, well, let's figure out another way to do it, or let's put out the bids again and see what else we can find. Even though, maybe it's down the road. Because we can make a, you know, we can make a foolish decision quickly, and we'll have a foolish answer. Now, I'm not saying that, now, one of these people may be the perfect person. I'm just saying, let's don't make that just because we feel the pressure.
Well, I, I think that's, that's why we've spent the last year talking about this. So I think part of the answer to your question, Doug, is that we're, we're actually slogged to decide. The election has nothing to do with the decision tonight. This decision is to the point that was brought up. Stevensville is one of the very few cities in the state of Texas that does not have an economic development strategy. And this is a tool to bring us together as a community to have a vision that, that as the first lady said, probably will have five points to it. But it brings it together so we can, we can discuss and, and complement that effort together. So I don't think we're rushing into anything. One, because it has nothing to do with the election, which bothered me a little bit about the legalities of the way the third presentation even came forward, because we cannot contract with number three if her goal is to help inform the voter. To me, that's, number three's dead. I mean, and I, I think we would have to ask her to, to resubmit her proposal because of that. And, and I think the questions that you're asking, that's, that's the reason that we're doing this. And it's real easy to say, well, why don't we just do this ourselves? Well, then why for thirty years have we not? Why since, for twenty-five years, why for twenty-five years since the legislation was authorized have we not? It, it comes down to, I think, us as a community leveraging expertise. And I know that the term consultant to some is a, is a negative term. But if you can imagine us being able to, for only forty-five thousand dollars, being able to leverage professional experience that then brings the community together to produce a, a, take a step down the road document, to me, that's forty-five thousand dollars well spent. And we should've done it a long time ago. So I, I, I think that, let's kinda, as a council, I think, divorce ourselves from the whole ballot election thing. This, this has nothing to do with that tonight. This is about, do we have a firm that has the expertise that can help us move the ball down the field? And, and the thought, Doug, the other question you brought up, should we go ask for another firm? Well, Pat'll tell you that, that we've got the four firms that are doing business in the state of Texas right now anyway. I mean, there's a couple of others that didn't submit, but that may be because we're a community of eighteen thousand, and they're, they're wanting to go, you know, cast their nets on big towns. I mean, if, if, if it were my preference, I, I, the other thing that hasn't been said about the Chavon group is that they've done this for Frisco, they've done it for Sugarland. Are we like them? Not much, but they've got experience in Texas. But Brady and I were just talking about Gartner, Kansas. In twenty fourteen, Chavon did a strategy for Gartner, Kansas. In twenty fourteen, Shaven did a strategy for Gardner, Kansas, um, which is Steenville in Kansas. It's a community that, uh, has a state highway through downtown. It has young families who want to move, who move up but are forced to move out. And it has no staff dedicated to economic development. And so what Shaven did was come into Gardner and move the ball down the field for them. And, and I, you know, I, I was, when I came here tonight, I, I was really pumped about number two. I thought, hey, this is awesome, and it's really worked extra money, because look at what, what they bring to the table. And you're right, we don't need that jury. I mean, the bubble chart, uh, okay, they got a lot of stuff that looks real pretty, but, but how, how useful is it to us where we are today in the, in the development of, of economic development? Because we're, we're kind of in elementary school, and they brought us a PhD proposal. And that, that's going to fail on arrival, I think. So, um, anyway, that, that's a couple of reactions to your, your questions. I hope that answered your questions.
I guess it did in one sense, but some of the conversation here tonight has been about speed, start immediately and whatever, which implies some pressure to get it done prior to an election. So I just want to make sure that that's off the table, that we made the right decision.
Yeah.
Because a vacant, a need that's not, that's not being fulfilled right now is not a reason to press, we're not doing CPR.
Right, right.
We don't make the right decision, is my point.
Right.
And so the question is, do we have, do we have someone that can do that?
Yeah.
And if they do, then I'll support for the forty thousand or seventy thousand dollars, because it's the right investment.
Yeah.
So let's do the right thing.
Other comments or?
Well, and then my only comment to that is that, that citizens may not vote to start, to, to do the tax thing, in which case we've lost a few months lead time if we don't start now. I don't particularly feel any urgency for it, but I don't know that waiting gets us anywhere either, because, uh, we either, if we get this analysis started now, and if the, uh, four B passes, then we can hit the ground running with that. If we start this contract now and the, uh, four B does not pass, we haven't lost the time leading up to that, where we waited for something to happen. So, I, I, I don't particularly feel any pressure, other than that also these things take a long time and grind very slowly. And so, every couple of months that you put something off, um, is, is farther down the path in the future.
Well, I do realize that, that four B, four A has some very unique aspects of the law that allows us to do some things that we can't do all by ourselves on our own. But the idea of economic development, most of what we're talking about is dollars. That's really, that's the bottom line, it's dollars and leadership and, you know, and decision points, or how do you make it happen? We have the ability to do that without four B.
Yes.
It isn't, it doesn't, it gives us some flex, four B gives us a lot of flexibility we wouldn't have had. But there's nothing to say that we don't go ahead and do it anyway, four B or not, fund it somehow. I prefer doing four B, I'll support that idea. But it doesn't mean we can't, and, and again, the pressure to get it started, some of that may be feeling, well, well, because you have the tax vote in May, we don't start collecting money until sometime in January.
So Doug, let me, let me answer.
So the question could be then, that we just do, and we have the ability to start that upfront.
Yeah.
Without having to wait that long. So I mean, some of that pressure is gone because we have.
Will you entertain a motion?
I, I, I will.
I'll make a motion, we hire number one.
Okay. So here's second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, heard the first presentation, Shaven.
Concepts.
Concepts. Have any discussion?
Is that on the agenda for the night?
Yes, it is.
Jerry, you know how to put a, put an end to this discussion, don't you? I would, Jerry, if you'd allow me, I'd like to say one other thing that ties into what Sherry and Doug were just saying, that I think is, is the real pressure. The budget, finance committee chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I think it is more important for us to think about this initiative in the context of the budget cycle than the election.
Absolutely.
So, the sooner we get started on this, the sooner we will have knowledge and information that can help us as we put together next year's budget. And if we wait, we're going to be another eighteen months in the budget cycle to, to do anything economic development related. And, and that's, that gets to the point I made in, in my opening remarks about this is, the goal of this is to make our city government more efficient and effective as a way to help our overall economic health of the community. And so, why should we do this now? So that we have information to help us have as, as informed budget as possible this year, is, is a way of being.
Absolutely.
Okay, so any other discussion? All right, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that motion carries, unanimous vote, we'll proceed with Shaven concepts. Um, I, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, um, and participate, I know this is a little unusual. But, and it's a little awkward to, like I said, to, to have a meeting like this, but it was great, the, the dialogue and exchange that we had. And, uh, I, I thank the council for your, um, work and diligence reviewing this stuff, and Pat, uh, for your work. Pat, really exceptional, getting these proposals in in as timely a manner as you did. And, uh, having them here to make presentations like this is just a first class, um, on your part, so, so thank you. And so then with that, at seven fifty-two, we'll, uh.
Move to adjourn, mayor.
Okay. Second, all right, so we'll adjourn. Thank you.
You're just wanting to go, you're just wanting to go down the coast.